It's huge.
Well, thank you for being so generous.
$12,000.
It's awesome.
All right, and I think our city manager has one more recognition this evening.
My pleasure to advise you all who have a birthday on this.
Indeed.
When I heard the number, I thought about doing something that actually might involve the firefighter, but we decided not to do that, but on behalf of all those here from the city alone. And this is the courage of new people so far.
Sweeten everybody up. Happy big one there, Mike.
Big one, best of all.
Yeah, it's amazing. I know that, you know, Bob, you and I probably shared birthdays down here before, you know, the days, but I never thought in my wildest dreams that I'd be, sir, spending my 60th birthday all, you know, with all of you, but happy to do so, so thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thanks.
Glad you made it.
Yeah, me too. We have had meetings down here with the fire department involved.
We have, we have.
I don't want to do that again.
A few years back.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm going to put an end to myself.
I'll go to dinner tonight. That's right, that's right.
Well, Mike, your service to the community has been extensive. Many, many of your years have been serving the Lawrence and Douglas County area, and I think everyone appreciates your hard work, your effort, and I've been fortunate to serve with you for seven years, going on eight, so it's been great.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you all.
All right. The next item is the consent agenda, and all matters listed on the consent agenda will be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion if there are no, there will be no separate discussion. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there an item that the city commissioners would like removed from the consent agenda? Is there any item that a member of the public would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to add claims to 178 vendors, the amount of $1,274,225.74. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve, excuse me. Motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioners, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes 4-0. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Mayor Commissioners, as you all know, we had a lot of fun here on Thursday as we found out about Kansas Department of Transportation enhancement grants. I sent you a premature email where I thought we'd only gotten two of the grants, and we found out that we've got all three that we had applied for. We got good information on that, and we're working on coming up with project budgets. You'll be seeing that here on future agendas in regards to how we want to proceed with these projects. Each one's got a little bit of a different path, but congratulations to all of the staff that did a really good job. We added KDOT's press release today statewide. They had a little bit shy of $18 million to respond to 91 applications. They ended up having 35 selected projects. By my math, we came in a little bit less than 10%, about 8% of all of the money statewide is coming to Lawrence, so that's, I think, a good reflection on the merits of our projects. So we're really excited to get these great projects underway. Did have some news in regards to our continued analysis of state legislative changes, and you see memorandum here from our Historic Resources Administrator in regards to changes to the state environs law. Mayor Udast yesterday to give some idea of workload and numbers, and we just have added a memo, and I think that reflects the number of reviews that we will not have to conduct. There may be collateral issues that would still require some level of review in association with that. We're still trying to fully understand what that will mean to all of our different processes, but hopefully that's responsive to your question. And finally, we had some information on this week's report regarding some transit website improvements and the mobility of that, so be happy to respond to any questions that you all have.
Any questions?
This is, oh, the plan on, like, the depot, what is the plan as we go forward? This come back to our agenda for acceptance of the grants.
I'm going to let Diane answer that question, because she's the one that got us this far down the track, and will talk a little bit about some of the next steps.
We have not yet had a conversation with the local projects in Topeka, but I think they're going to give us some general guidance, and I think one of the steps obviously would be for you all to formally accept the grant, for staff to identify possibilities where that match would come from. And then, as you know, with that grant, there's some particular things that we would need to get into place, including the ownership transfer with the BNSF. So we would essentially be picking a lot of those issues up where we left off with them here a year or so ago, and they're awaiting us to do that, and then we could proceed then with the construction project.
Most special thank you to you and all the members of the staff that worked on this application. Did a masterful job.
Our interns, Michelle Stevens, who did the application two years ago, did a lot of work on this and put the initial one together. Emily Cote, she put the winning one together here, and so I certainly want to recognize them, as well as all the other groups that worked very hard on putting the passion behind getting this in front of you all.
Very good. Thank you.
Great work. Any other questions regarding the city manager's report? Thanks again to everybody for being able to submit on those grants, being successful, and bringing some additional dollars to the city of Lawrence. Okay, the next item are our regular agenda items, and I want to make a note, if everyone would please silence their cell phones, so we're not interrupted during the meeting. And also, as far as public comment, there'll be a four limit time limit, and when you reach 3 minutes and 30 seconds, or as close as I can get, you'll hear this noise, and that means try to wrap up your comments. Okay, the first agenda item is to receive the Lawrence broadband report from our consultant who prepared an excellent document.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I just wanted to have a brief introduction here before I turn it over to Joanne. As you know, at the end of last year, you all identified the issue of access to broadband networks as an important one for our community, not only for our existing businesses and residents, but also as an economic development tool to attract additional business in the future. As a result of your direction, we did put out a request for proposals for consulting firms to assist us with looking at what the city might do in terms of helping to further the network opportunities and access to broadband that we have in Lawrence. And as a result of that, the city did hire CTC Technology and Energy, and Joanne Hovis is with us this evening with the firm to provide us an overview of the report that she's done, and at the conclusion of her remarks, staff would like to also add some additional things that we think would be good to highlight from the recommendations from a staff perspective. I did want to quickly acknowledge several people who are in the audience and had worked on this, a team that worked on the initial request for proposals, and the hiring of Joanne, that recommendation coming to you, and also helping with identification of just the general issues for Joanne and her firm early on. Mayor Dever, Jim Wisdom, who is here, our city's IT director, James Reisner, who's also here, who's the traffic supervisor with the city, Ed Mullins, finance director, Jeff Perry is also here. Jeff is the deputy director for, technology officer rather, for the University of Kansas. Davil Smackelwain, a prior intern of ours as well. And I also wanted to acknowledge several additional people who are here from a kind of a statewide perspective. We have Stanley Adams, who is here, he's the program manager for the statewide broadband initiative, and also Court Buffington is with Canren, and that is the state agency that is focusing on high-speed internet access primarily related to the educational institutions in the state, and they're located here in Lawrence. Additionally, I wanted just to acknowledge that we have several representatives of the existing providers that we have in our community here. We have Deborah from WOW. We have Mike from AT&amp;T, and Chris with Wicked Broadband. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joanne to provide an overview for you. Welcome, Joanne.
Thank you, Diane. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, thank you for having me here. It's really a pleasure. For all that I have a technology company, I have to admit, I want to be sure I've got the technology done. Thank you. I'm going to have to rely on Diane to bring up my PowerPoint.
Let me just have it hidden here.
Amazingly, I'm usually the least technical person in the room, so. And related to that, I should say, my background is as a broadband analyst and training as an attorney, but I've been working in strategic and business planning around public broadband strategies for 17 years. Most of my employees are engineers, but I do not count among them, so you'll see from most of the content of my presentation that it's not very heavy on the engineering, but hopefully solid on the strategy component, and there's certainly some technical detail in the report itself. I am going to go relatively quickly through it. I would just talk in terms of an agenda for what I'd like to present to you tonight. Generally, what were the goals and the parameters under which we worked as established by the city's team directing us? Why are we talking about fiber optics? Why has that been the focus of the analysis we did? What did we learn about the existing situation in broadband here in Lawrence? And I should say that it has changed even in the few weeks since the report was finalized, so I can give a little bit of an update on that, but also talk a bit about how fast-moving your environment is, and then talk about some of the strategies we recommend, and if you like, also some of the strategies with regard to which we advised at least some caution or significantly further analysis and due diligence. And that's generally what I'm planning to talk about. I really am having technical problems. I'm going to switch over to the keyboard. That should work. In terms of the goals that we were working with, we were very much focused on trying to take what you already have and leverage it and build from there to establish the most robust city infrastructure possible to facilitate a range of different outcomes regarding city provision of services internally to itself, and then city facilitation and enabling of services more broadly out to the public. We also looked at some strategies around city provision of service to the public, but we did so with significantly more caution and also with the understanding based on the team from the city we were working with, the public sector stakeholders we met with, and the private sector stakeholders, that this was a very aggressive and ambitious approach, and there was, I think, far more appetite for more modest and incremental approaches, and you'll see that is very much the focus of our recommendations and of our analysis. And we looked at how to use this infrastructure in order to contain city costs over time and to maximize the benefits of the investments, both of the past and those to come. We looked at the goals of trying to make sure that any infrastructure you do have or that you build in the future is going to maximize certain kinds of outcomes around your key goals for education, economic activity, and so on, and then what will essentially differentiate Lawrence and what will catalyze investment here. And that, of course, is a much more loaded and complex question in Lawrence than it is in almost any other community like you or of your size anywhere in the United States, and that's because of your proximity to Kansas City. So it's a much more complicated situation here where you are comparing yourselves to what's being built by Google, which is world-class, state-of-the-art infrastructure, unlike almost anything else in the United States just down the road from you. Most communities are not looking at that. They're really comparing themselves to their neighbors who have roughly comparable services to themselves. That's one of the challenges, I think, that you face here. So those were the goals that we established for how we, what we were trying to accomplish with the strategies developed in tandem with your internal team. Let me talk about why it was that we and they focused very much on fiber optics, beyond the obvious of what I just said with regard to Google and the fact that Google is rather famously building fiber to every home in Kansas City, both Kansas Cities and some of their suburbs. Beyond that obvious fact, it is, I think, not much disputed anymore that fiber optics all the way to the premises is the holy grail of communications infrastructure. There will sometimes be some arguments about that, but far less so in the last few years since Google and a number of other entities have put significant investment dollars into this infrastructure. It's certainly the infrastructure that is emerging as the gold standard, gold standard, as the international standard, let's say, in our competitor nations, in Asia, and to some degree in Europe. And this graphic attempts to demonstrate in terms of the kinds of capacity, the speeds that we use in communications networking, what fiber to the premises is capable of, and how it compares to the other technologies that are, that I think we can safely these days call legacy technologies. And in a couple of minutes, I'll tell you what you have here in Lawrence with regard to those legacy technologies. But as you can see, as you move across this graphic from left to right, you will see that we are getting into far higher speeds, going up to a gigabit in this graphic, but frankly, with fiber to the premises, you can go up to many hundreds and in time thousands that speed, depending on the kinds of network electronics you can put at either end of your fiber. And the other kinds of technologies, both wireless at the bottom and wireline at the top, that are available to our institutions, our businesses, and our homes, are not capable of the same. Here's another way of demonstrating that same point, and this, I think, underlies not only why we, our recommendations, as you'll see, focus on fiber for internal government use, but also focus on enabling fiber for private sector provision of services. Here's another way of demonstrating that point, where we look at a range of different technologies, all of which are currently in use in almost any American market. And you'll see that at the top, starting with the less capable, the next-to-most recent generation of wireless services, going through the T1, which is still the most common means of provision of communication services to businesses in large parts of the country, and in some places even to schools and libraries and hospitals. In some cases, they're lucky to get that. And then coming down to the lowest four categories, all of which require fiber. The red line, obviously, upload time, time spent sending the communication up to the network or the internet, the blue, download, how long it takes to pull it down, and you see the dramatic difference and the kind of impact it can have on an application as simple as uploading or downloading a five-megabyte file, something that in an institutional context will happen all the time, maybe many times a day, maybe simultaneously from multiple offices within one institution. And fiber down at the bottom, the only infrastructure capable of those kinds of speeds. If I may, can I ask, was that clear? Are there any questions on that? Thank you. Hope the etiquette is okay for me to ask for questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Appreciate that flexibility. So what have we learned about broadband availability in Lawrence? And here I am talking about availability and service to your businesses and your residents as opposed to government institutions or the university, but putting aside the city of Lawrence itself and its own needs, this is part of what we learned about the services that are available to the homes and businesses within the community. What we, what the Federal Communications Commission, the federal government defines as broadband, is universally available here in Lawrence. That's pretty clear. There is almost nowhere in this community that you can't get some form of broadband. The most widely available is mobile broadband service, where you have a few different providers, and that's pretty consistent with any city of the size anywhere in the United States. And then you also have a relatively capable cable network, and the same on the phone side, where AT&amp;T has been upgrading its DSL service to, it's the product it calls U-verse, which for AT&amp;T is a state-of-the-art product. And as you know from recent announcements, with the transition from Nology to WOW, there has been an announcement of actually an improvement in speed on cable modem speeds as well, and that has actually happened since the report was published, so it's breaking news. In that way, you're very much comparable to other communities of your size and stature and to some much larger communities in metropolitan areas, and comparable to some major cities as well that have not seen more significant upgrades since that time period, since these legacy networks were built, let me say. The challenge with that, obviously, is what I said about Google and the services that are available down the road. And if you remember, oops, sorry, going the wrong way, this graphic, you see that this pretty significant difference between those legacy services, even the ones with the most current upgrades with regard to electronics, to maximize the capabilities of those networks, not entirely comparable to fiber to the premises, certainly not delivering the kind of excitement and consumer excitement that we see around fiber to the premises and gigabit speeds. The other thing that I think is important about your current broadband environment is that you have a relatively entrepreneurial environment here in Lawrence, much more so than many comparable communities where I've worked, and you have a local provider that is deploying some fiber to the home. Nology also, based on the National Broadband Map, has some fiber to the premises holdings, although I believe it's very limited. We're unable to determine how extensive, but a significant handful of locations is my understanding. And then, of course, you have Wicked Broadband in this market, which has some fiber to the premises too and is seeking to expand it. And that entrepreneurial environment is always a really good thing to have, and it brings a kind of a new element into the market, and hopefully a successful and expansive one over time. And that's a big part of what we learned. Frankly, if I'd given you this presentation even three weeks ago, I would have said that we had some pretty significant concerns about the cable modem environment here, in that there were significant caps on total service that were imposed by Nology. According to press accounts, that is something that WOW has lifted, and that's a very important development, in our opinion, because bandwidth caps limit the use of the product we purchase. In a sense, they penalize our use of exactly what we should be encouraging, which is use of that product, that economic enabler, that educational enabler, that healthcare enabler, and we want environments in which consumers can choose among options that enable them to benefit from more and benefit from innovation and benefit from a feeling of abundance where they're not rationing their own use. Bandwidth caps unfortunately cut directly against that feeling of abundance and point toward rationing. They are almost universal in the mobile broadband environment these days. The biggest providers in mobile have pretty significant bandwidth caps, and I don't see that changing, but they're far less ubiquitous in cable modem, and I think it's a really positive development that you are seeing them, apparently seeing them, leave this particular market, because it did mean that this market from a cable modem standpoint was behind some of your counterparts in comparable communities in neighboring states.
Let me ask you a question. How are those caps deployed? Are they by slowing down speed in your computer or by price, or?
It's usually done by price. Companies handle it in different ways, and you might actually see both things happening, but generally, the term of use agreements will say that after a certain amount of downloading and uploading up to a certain gigabyte amount, and in the mobile environment, it's frequently five megabytes per month. I'll show you, actually, I can show you what Nology was doing. For a three-megabit service, there was a five-gigabyte data limit over the course of the month, and then my understanding is that beyond that, there would be extra pricing. So you would see an additional line item on your bill. This is a really significant problem in more rural areas where there's only mobile broadband available, because for someone to operate a home-based business, they will run up against this data cap within a few hours, if that's their only choice. The same if they're downloading video, for example, for their children's education. Same thing will happen. But here, where you have a range of options, it's a less dire situation. That said, when we're talking about a commodity that is as valuable and where more enables more and enables better activity and more education, more economic activity, policy should ideally push toward abundance and openness and use of the product rather than in the other direction. So very positive development recently. Still relatively low speeds generally, relative to the kinds of speeds that we see in Kansas City. Those are unique speeds, and we are at, so the one-gigabit service that Google will offer in Kansas City is 300 times the speed of this three-megabit per second service that you see listed up here for $32.95. 300 times the speed for twice the price, essentially, because their product's $70. That's a rather unique environment, is what they're offering there, but hopefully one that will expand more extensively through the country. So you're still looking at relatively low speeds, although WOW has also said that it is increasing its speeds, and with U-verse, AT&amp;T is, that is an automatic increase in speed relative to what was available under earlier generations of DSL, but still not world-class. But that does not put you in a unique environment in the United States. That pretty much puts you in the same place as most American communities who don't have Google or don't have Verizon Fios, which is Verizon's fiber-to-the-home product, or some rural provider who has managed to build fiber to the home, or there are about 100 municipal networks that offer municipal fiber to the home or high-end municipal cable service. And all of that put together is a pretty small fraction of the United States. So you're keeping pace with many American communities, for what that's worth. That's the current environment. I have some comparable numbers here for other communities, but I think in light of what we just discussed, we've probably covered it. So I'm going to suggest that we move on and talk about, given this environment, what are the ways in which the city can take existing projects and existing infrastructure, leverage them and expand beyond it, and hopefully enable, over time, development of a more robust broadband environment to the home and business? That's sort of the strategy. Again, taking a relatively modest, if I may say so, conservative, which is generally my consulting philosophy, relatively cautious approach to control city risk around these kinds of projects, but hopefully open up some really nice opportunities for private sector provision of service and more competition in the market. So that strategy flows from the fact that you've already completed a really impressive set of projects to build fiber optics internally for government use. And, you know, much credit to the many departments of city government here who have been involved in this, and this has happened over a number of years. They, you know, in a relatively supportive environment, they have conducted at remarkably low cost quite a bit of important construction and have taken advantage of opportunities where they emerge for shared construction costs, for negotiating conduit or access to fiber where possible, and for looking for the kinds of efficiencies that emerge frequently in relationships with institutions like the county and KU. And they've completed a really impressive set of projects. So you have some fiber in a bunch of different locations. You have conduit in a number of different locations, and you have, and surprisingly, this is a relatively, not a common thing in many governments, you have really good documentation and understanding of everything you have, so you're able to maximize its use. That has all been very well done. Your departments are interested in expanding that strategy and building further where the opportunity presents itself, where there are partnerships that are available and make for very cost-effective construction. for very cost-effective construction, and where they see efficiencies that emerge from, for example, other kinds of capital improvement projects in the rites of way. And our recommendation would be to absolutely proceed along these lines because there are a few ways in which you will get significant benefit. The first thing is you're maximizing opportunity and you're realizing efficiency. The second thing is that, and let me see if I've got all this on the next slide. The second thing is that you are building a critical mass of infrastructure for government use here that can serve your internal communications purposes, alleviate some of your leasing costs. And if you think about leasing, you think back to those graphics closer to the beginning of my presentation. You have relatively high costs for leasing some of that legacy infrastructure and some much, much significantly reduced speeds relative to what you can realize using your own fiber and off-the-shelf equipment. So this, over time, we think there will be per-unit savings, dramatic per-unit savings, maybe not absolute savings, because you will be able to scale up in services and provision to yourselves of communication services over your own fiber infrastructure. You'll be able to scale up to the kinds of speeds that are possible over fiber. I mean, you'll be able to do it in a way that's cost-effective and managed. By contrast, if you were to have to purchase enhanced services over time as your needs grow, and they will because communications needs only go in one direction, and they go pretty fast, they get bigger and bigger, and that means they generally get more costly. If you have to purchase those in what is a not particularly competitive or robust market, it's fine by standards of most American communities comparable to you, but not the kind of competition that we would want to see to maximize investment and bring pricing to a place where we could really say there's a vibrant market. If you have to purchase those over time, you will not have that kind of control over prices or over your costs. So the fiber strategy not only allows you to save on a per-unit basis over time, but it allows you to predict and control those costs over time. In that way, it's essentially a means of hedging the risk of long-term communication service costs. It is buying rather than leasing. It is a really solid, cautious, conservative strategy. We have 15 years of projects by municipalities throughout the country undertaking strategies like this and 15 years of data that demonstrate how solid these strategies are economically. Conservative consultant that I am, I can strongly recommend the strategy because I know that it's manageable on the cost side. It is something that your staff and your team here is capable of deploying and managing and operating, and it gives you significant insurance against long-term increases in your communications costs. I can talk about other places that have done this, if you'd like, but there's some detail in the report about that. It's a pretty solid strategy. Now, building from that, this critical mass of fiber, if you keep pursuing the strategies that your internal team has advocated for, this critical mass of fiber has other uses as well. And that use is to enable the private sector to invest in this community and to better serve the homes and businesses in the community, as well as the institutions, to compete better to serve your schools and your other institutional players such as healthcare facilities, for example, who are big buyers of bandwidth and don't always have the kinds of competitive options they would like to have. The idea here is that when that fiber is deployed and when the conduit is put into the ground, your team is putting in a lot of excess fiber. When you build fiber, you put in lots of extra. The cost is not in the fiber itself. There, the incremental cost is virtually, it's negligible, not even noticeable in most projects. The cost is the labor. It's the digging of the trenches or the putting up of the plant on the poles. And so putting in lots of extra is just a prudent, it's a best practice. It's done universally. And once all that extra fiber is there, if it's connected to the right places and it's put in in the right way, it becomes a very useful resource for a wide range of different private sector providers to come into this community and compete. And there are some who choose not, as a matter of policy, to use municipal infrastructure, and that should certainly be their choice. I'm fine with that, as long as they're not trying to preclude the municipality or others from approaching, from taking these strategies. Unfortunately, in some states, they have done that. To my knowledge, there's no barrier to any of these strategies in the state of Kansas. But there are lots of competitive providers, including some large national companies like Level 3, who aggressively serve the institutional and enterprise markets, who are very open to using municipal infrastructure. And the fact that that infrastructure is there makes it possible for them to reach customers that otherwise would be cost-prohibitive for them to reach. They would have to build all the way to Lawrence and then all the way into Lawrence. And if you are making available, on an open, non-discriminatory basis, to any comer who has the credit and technical credentials to be able to do so, letting them lease your facilities for a fee, it makes it possible for them to compete in this market, makes it possible for your existing providers, potentially, to get to parts of this market where they are not currently present. And that's the idea. And I'll show you in a minute a little graphic that maybe kind of lays out that strategy. I would just say one thing, this is the last bullet point on this slide, that I think is important, which is that your departments have really done a terrific job. There's a remarkable level of collaboration. And in fact, all of the meetings I had, the collaborative meetings, were stunningly good. So it was a conversation among all the public sector stakeholders that was really good. And I think they will continue those conversations because they were sharing information and sharing strategies and leveraging each other. That was terrific. I saw the same thing on the business side, by the way, where many of the businesses were somewhat frustrated not knowing that there were other competitive options in the market. For example, many didn't know that CenturyLink was coming into the market and was offering competitive services, hopefully. CenturyLink is about to come into the market and offer competitive services to your businesses. They were able to share that information with each other, compare prices, and be able to leverage each other's knowledge, hopefully, to make for more bargaining power and better information in going into these negotiations. So I just broadly want to commend everyone here on what I thought was a really good collaborative environment. I do not always see that in all government. We see silos more often than we see collaboration. And you seem to have broken down a lot of those silos. And to facilitate and further that process, I would strongly recommend that policies around coordination between departments, collaboration, sharing of information, making sure that if one department is building in the rites of way, other departments know so that they can request that conduit go in the ground at that point, those kinds of collaborations, that should all be established as commission policy, as opposed to sort of left to happen among the departments. Because when it is your policy as a commission, then it will happen without exception. And if there are any silos, they will hopefully disappear. I didn't see any, but I would, I think, as a hedge against making sure that they don't emerge over time with staffing changes and so on, that's maybe the simplest, but maybe the most powerful recommendation we make in almost any community. So let me move on, and, well, here's the map. And then I'll get to the graphics in a minute. But this is a lot of what we are suggesting that you add. And as you can see, the orange lines on this, orange or red, it's showing up differently on my computer than on the screen there. So let me say, the yellow lines at the outskirts, that's commercial infrastructure. The orangey red, for lack of a better term, in the center around those rings, some of that is, all of that is your existing infrastructure. And we are recommending that you close those loops to create these rings, which enables a very high level of reliability. Because when there is a cut somewhere, there is still a root to the rest of the ring, just going backwards. Rather than talk to gray, let me show you what, the graphics of what I think the strategy that we recommend and that you, to some degree, already have underway, what this, what the strategy looks like. And this is a graphic that just attempts to take it out of gray text and put it in colors, as it were. The idea here is, here is the role of the city. It is building the fiber, the digital roads of our era, to city facilities, connecting city facilities, and then offering services internally between and among city facilities to key economic development areas and potentially also to a location that would be identified as an Internet point of presence. This would be a place where providers coming through Kansas could stop, and you are, by the way, on the backbone of the Internet. I-70 is the backbone of the Internet of the United States, if not the entire world. It is one of the major transit routes of massive bundles of fiber crossing the country, and you are right here on the side of it. And most of those providers coming through have no on-ramp or off-ramp into this community. An Internet point of presence, which is one of the recommendations that's discussed in the report, would give you the place where they could all meet, essentially. And they could drop off services and then start to potentially serve consumers in this market or sell to other providers who would serve consumers in this market. So in this vision, the idea is you connect the facilities, key economic development targets, and you connect to an Internet point of presence where you bring all of your fiber back to connect there. So there's a connection between the Internet backbone, right here in Lawrence, to the city's fiber, connecting major city facilities and rigging the city. In the same vision, your next step is connecting your key community anchor institutions. And this is also very viable, and there's significant interest, in particular, on the part of the schools and libraries, who we spoke to quite extensively. And in this vision, you have then laid the groundwork for the next step, which is private sector investment. Now, this could say public sector. In many communities, this will say public sector because some cities would, are extremely enthusiastic about undertaking these steps themselves. And if there are stakeholders and if the elected officials in this community truly want to take this on, it's entirely a viable public sector strategy. But it's also potentially a private sector strategy. And that is certainly a more cautious approach, or at least a more incremental one. So on the backbone of the roads that you have built, those digital roads and all that fiber capacity, the private sector can now connect through that Internet point of presence back to Kansas City where they can buy extremely low-cost Internet bandwidth, bring it back here and sell it in this market. And even this close to Kansas City, Internet, commodity Internet bandwidth costs are significantly higher than in an urban area like Kansas City. That's just the nature of how the Internet works. But bringing more competition into that market as well will bring that kind of pricing down. And then the private sector can also compete over the fiber that you have enabled them to compete over, to serve schools, libraries, and hospitals, bringing competition into that market as well. The next private sector strategy, potentially, to build, using the backbone fiber that you've provided, to build to other anchors and certain kinds of businesses and office parks and so on. And, you know, there are a wide range of differing kinds of target areas, the kinds of businesses that are looking for better, more competitive pricing, but very importantly, for more and better service because of some of the challenges they have with the service they have here, the kinds of businesses that we do not want relocating to Kansas City for the bandwidth there. And let me add a very, very large caveat here. This is entirely, you're somewhat speculative, in an ideal environment, that backbone that you have provided, sorry. I am, like I said, not very technical. There I go again. That backbone that you provided then becomes the backbone, the infrastructure, for the private sector to then branch out and build from your fiber to residences and small businesses. The hardest place to get with fiber, the most costly, and at the end of the day, probably the most important from an economic activity standpoint. And that is the way in which these relatively modest and incremental approaches to building your own fiber and meeting your own needs first can, over time, potentially be leveraged to expand broadband in this community. It's not the equivalent of building municipal fiber to the home in a short period of time, but it's also not going to entail the $30 to $65 million that municipal fiber to the home would entail if it were built in the next few years here, based on the engineering that my engineers did. That was their general cost estimate. And I know that's a wide range, but that's because there are an enormous number of contingent factors in fiber construction. But generally, you're somewhere in the $30 to $60 million range to get to every home and business in Lawrence. This is a more cautious strategy in the hundreds of thousands, and this would be our primary recommendation to you, that at a minimum, you undertake this set of strategies and then go from there. I'm going to stop there.
Questions from Julian?
The number you mentioned upfront, $320,650,000, is what it would cost to go to 17-mile backbone, and we don't have currently, is that, if you have a question?
It would be to fill the gaps where you don't currently have it and make it as robust as possible.
So, can that close the loop, so to speak?
Yes, exactly.
And then, any kind of private entrepreneur could come in and then with a proper lease from the city, connect from our rank to individual businesses, homes, business parks?
That is the idea, is that their cost now, the capital cost for them to get to those homes and businesses is significantly lowered because they don't have what's called the middle mile construction cost. The term middle mile generally means something like, you know, the major roads in a community, it's comparable. They now build the last mile. That is the idea. Now, and there is actually a provider in this community that's talking about doing that on a relatively limited basis. Of course, that's, Wicked Broadband is interested in using your fiber to do this. So that's actually a really good indication. I will say, though, that, that's why I always provide this caveat, before I get to what's called the green strategy on this document, that we don't have years of data on this strategy. We don't have years of data that would show that building this middle mile as a city is going to lead to 100% construction of the community. And I want to be really clear about that. To some degree, it really is somewhat speculative. That said, it's getting them a lot closer.
What was going to be my next question? First of all, what do you think the cost is to an individual home if, say, the entire community was being considered for fiber optic? What's the cost per house? Do you have a number like that?
I can't give that to you off the top of my head, but I can have an engineer work it up and send it to you tomorrow. There are a number of different considerations. It depends on how close the fiber is and an actual, a connection point to that fiber is to that individual home. It's going to depend on whether the construction has to be underground or aerial. It'll depend on whether there's some conduit in that route or not. And it's not easy to say that there's a rule of thumb around these kinds of construction costs.
I've heard a number of $300 per home, I've heard a number of $600 per home. And I know there's a lot of variables, and I'd rather know if those were relatively...
Those are, I've never heard a number that was less than many times that. Those are extraordinarily aggressive numbers. I have never, and, and, you know, here now, I'm wishing I had an engineer with me, but I would say that it is, we heard numbers when Verizon was deploying Fios in the suburban areas of the mid-Atlantic and the northeast and parts of the West Coast. We heard numbers of $1,500 per home just for the drop. That means just from the curb into the home. So I would proceed with extreme caution around really optimistic numbers. And some pricing has come down since then. Equipment pricing has definitely come down, but labor costs have not come down and the cost of digging trenches have not come down. And I'd be astonished, you know, that 300 to 600 may refer to some small component of the build, but it would not be the entirety. Thanks. So Diane is pointing me to page 103 of the report where there's a breakdown of the range of costs that I mentioned of up to $66 million. And you'll see there the different components. Most of these numbers are going to be based on the experience of my engineers with the Verizon builds of FiOS, which are, for the most part, wrapping up to some degree now and in some areas. So there are going to be different factors in different communities, and one always wants to be relatively cautious about projecting costs. But fiber-to-the-home construction is incredibly costly. It's costly to build, and it's relatively costly to maintain as well and operate. And this is part of the reason for my conservatism as a consultant to public sector entities. Yeah, I have counterparts who encourage cities to build fiber-to-the-home and operate those networks themselves, and they do it all the time. And I am very cautious about doing that because as much as I know that the institutional model, build fiber to your own facilities, save yourself money over time, control your own fate, I know that business model works because I've seen it work in hundreds of places. And I've worked the spreadsheets, and I see how the numbers flow. As strong as I feel about that, that's how challenging I think fiber-to-the-home is. It is an incredibly worthy endeavor. It's incredibly important for a community to think about because I truly believe that this infrastructure is our future as a nation. That's why I do this work. But for an individual community, it's taking on an enormous amount of risk, and rosy projections don't help. They put you in a place where there are high expectations and a high risk of failure because parameters have been based around those rosy projections. If you're going to undertake this or some element of it, even some small component of it, I would work with worst-case planning, not best-case planning, because inevitably it will be challenging and things will go wrong. And it's best to know upfront what your risk is so you're walking into it knowing how far that money will go, how many homes it can potentially build, and so on.
Okay. You mentioned the high cost of maintenance to homes. What are some of the maintenance challenges?
Well, the fiber just has to be maintained on an ongoing basis. When one has fiber out in the ground or on poles, one is essentially a utility. Now, you're already a utility. You have some experience with this. So a wide range of things, from the constant call for locates when there are other entities out in the rights-of-way who are going to be digging, and they need you to identify where your fiber is. It's an ongoing cost, and staff going out or contractor going out and handling locates, to power in the field, to the cost of real estate in the field where you have to locate certain kinds of facilities, to deterioration and the inevitable cuts and challenges to the plant in the field. And then there's the cost of maintaining and operating equipment and operating a service with the relevant levels of customer service and the appropriate levels of service themselves in a market where there are already broadband competitors. That's the other piece. There are legacy broadband competitors that are not fiber-to-the-home competitors, but many consumers will still choose to go with those products because they're known and they may be more -- well, they may be cheaper, frankly. So I can also get you numbers, if you'd like, on ongoing maintenance costs on a sort of per-home basis. And there's obviously their efficiencies, their economies as you build and get to greater scale.
Julian, you mentioned the POP at the farmland property. Would that help us? Tell us about how we access -- the nearest POP is in Kansas City, right?
Yeah, you don't have anything here in Lawrence that essentially is a place where multiple entities are able to meet. To some degree, the university serves that function in a very narrow way. And I won't purport to speak to the university, for the university, because they can do that themselves and will do it in a much more expert way than I can. But what you don't have is a mechanism here where your fiber can interconnect with multiple other providers, essentially a place where everybody comes in, and then there are opportunities to build relationships with their connections and sharing and the opportunity to buy and sell from each other. You just end up with a less vibrant market as a result.
So is that cost included in your estimate for the $300 to $600,000?
No, it's not. We did not do a design on that.
Julian, going back and talking about the, you know, the investment of the partnership that we would have to put together to be able to do the middle mile and fill in the gaps of where the fiber needs to be. And with changes that happen so quickly in this industry, and you mentioned earlier about changes that have happened over the last three weeks, and if we look at our goals and parameters, as you've outlined here, and that looking at, you know, providing all of our internal organization and making sure that's all in place, before we go to the public then, you know, with the fiber and trying to do lease agreements and develop the cost for all of that, would it make sense to do a reevaluation then? Because it seems like to me that this is going to be a timely process, and a lot of things are going to change based on, you know, industry seeing what we're doing as a community, that, you know, we took care of our internal operations, and now we're going to go public. Wouldn't there be changes that have to be made in an update of this plan and the recommendations?
Yeah, I recommend that you reconsider your strategies on an ongoing and constant basis because you are seeing some change and movement in this market. I also have found in many cases, I've had quite a few experiences where, when the community starts to act more assertively in this area, they will suddenly see providers step up in ways that they have not before. And certainly, we know that when a new provider comes to town, the existing provider becomes far more responsive to customer service questions and so on. Competition works, right? We know our system works when we have that competition. And what you're talking about here is, you know, you're not competing with the private sector, but you're talking about providing for your own needs. And as a result, what you may see, even in the short term, is more aggressive pricing and better service from some of the providers who would like to meet your needs themselves. And that has, I think, a very positive effect. But it may also mean that as you engage in strategies that enable better competition in this market, the existing competitors in this market will step up in ways they haven't before. So we certainly hear in Kansas City, and I know it's a unique example, it's sort of singular because what they're getting there is so unusual, but the existing providers in that market have become conscious of pricing, low-income consumers, customer service in ways that has never been the case before. It's a remarkable matter. But if I'm understanding the question correctly, yes, I would recommend staying constantly engaged in the strategy, refine it, shape it, so that you are letting these policies enable and facilitate the best possible private sector services and outcomes. There's another element to it, and this may not have been part of the question. Forgive me if I misunderstood, but in terms of the technology itself, I would say the one thing that's unlikely to change about your strategy is fiber optics. That's forever. That's for the rest of my lifetime. People sometimes will ask me, isn't this going to change? Why should we invest in this now? Because in a few years, it'll be something else. That's not the case. This is the infrastructure of the future. The electronics will change, the capabilities will change, but the fiber itself will enable those changes over time. So in that way, this is very much a future-proof investment.
Okay, thank you.
Julian, do you have any questions?
Couple of things I've found interesting about the report. Can you speak to the GDP increasing 0.3% when broadband doubles? And what something like that would have on an effect in our community? And secondly, because to me, to me, this conversation's about economic development, and we're compared to, was it Madison, Ann Arbor, and Champaign? Champaign-Urbana, Illinois. So, and you said we were slower, costlier, and more limited. So what is that costing us in terms of economic development compared to those other communities? And what could we be looking at as far as the economic impact of an investment in this in the next X number of years?
I wish that were a really easy question to answer, and let me tell you why it's challenging and sort of answer it in a roundabout way. We compared you to those communities for purposes of looking at the actual speeds that are being delivered to you by your current providers. And with the change from "knowledgy to wow" and the lifting of the bandwidth caps, you are much more at parity with those communities, which I think in some ways are counterparts to you in this part of the country. And I'm a Midwesterner by birth. Always like to point that out when I'm here. The -- I -- it's not clear to me that you're necessarily at a competitive disadvantage, a significant competitive disadvantage with regard to broadband as compared to those communities. With time, you are at a significant competitive disadvantage compared to Kansas City and compared to the places on the coasts that have Verizon FiOS. That is, that's the big question about economic activity over time. You have some level of broadband throughout this community, and your cable provider is now not rationing, and that's going to be a positive thing. There's decent service here, but there's a challenge for your businesses, and they seem challenged. They certainly express that to us. It's not clear to me that in Madison, a business would be a whole lot better off with regard to those products unless they have many more competitors, which is not all that likely. What is the really big question is what happens in a community that doesn't have massive bandwidth when a company with big bandwidth needs, like a healthcare company or a data center, or a company that's doing constant online ordering, is looking for where it's going to locate? This is why there are major American cities that are very concerned about this issue. City of Seattle, for example, is surrounded by suburbs that have Verizon FiOS. Seattle does not. City of Portland, Oregon, is in the same place. These are pretty dynamic competitive places, but when they look at what is coming down in the future, they say, if I were a software developer, would I locate on this side of the city line or would I locate on the suburban side? And that's the big challenge. And then they look to Asia, and they say, and if I were in an international company, would I locate here or in Hong Kong? Here or in parts of rural Japan that actually have this service? Because the great majority of Japan has this kind of service over fiber-to-the-home. Those are the long-term challenges. The tough part of this is that we have relatively limited research and data that tells us exactly what the consequences are. So what you have in the report there and the statistic you cited is our survey of what we think is the best research that's out there. Some of it, frankly, is research, but it's based somewhat on anecdote. And a lot of the analysis of the economic impact of broadband was because we need data over a period of time, and the era of broadband is still relatively short. We're maybe in year 13 of the broadband era, maybe 14. So a lot of that research was based on data of what's the difference between having no broadband and having 200 kilobits per second? Or what's the difference between 200 kilobits and 768 kilobits? What we don't know is what's the difference between 3 megabits and a gigabit? We don't really have research that shows that yet. We just know intuitively, and because we work in economic development, because we talk to businesses all the time, that when they have to choose where they're going to locate, and I can say that as a small business owner, I will never, ever locate anywhere where I can't get a direct fiber connection and cost-effective services. I've made that mistake, and I won't repeat it because I've learned to live with the consequences. So I'm sorry that I can't easily quantify for you what that number is. I think if we had that data, we'd probably see hundreds more American communities building fiber, and the data will emerge over time. But right now, it is largely based on the sort of sense of intuition, our suspicion of what's coming.
Two more questions. So I'm torn between the Googles in Kansas City, and we shouldn't use our -- we shouldn't use that to compare us to ourselves, but, you know, I don't know about you guys, but it seems to me that we're in competition in relationship to jobs and economic development when it comes to Kansas City. And so are we at a competitive disadvantage with Google being there? And how does that factor into this equation of we're kind of compared to Kansas City, but we're kind of not?
It's very tough because of your proximity to Kansas City. I mean, that is the big challenge that none of those other communities face. To some degree, the good news for you is that Google is not focused on the business market. It is serving the community anchors, the schools and libraries and government and so on, and it's laser-focused on the residential market. And I've sometimes wondered why that is and if and when that will change, but it hasn't changed yet, and they've been talking about this project now for three years. So to the extent that helps, the dynamic that is emerging in Kansas City, though, is of people moving into renting rooms and houses, moving into old row houses and so on, and setting up their businesses there in residential areas. It's the business moving into the residential market that is really the interesting dynamic. And that, I, yes, I mean, I think you are at a competitive disadvantage relative to that for certain kinds of businesses because they won't come here. And in the course of my conversations with some of your businesses, there were one or two who said, this is a challenge for us. With time, we may have to go elsewhere because we can not only get more in Kansas City, but we can buy it a lot cheaper, like commodity Internet bandwidth. Even in a pre-Google environment, some of that was true, depending on where you were located in Kansas City. Just because if you were on a fiber route in a major city, you're close to the Internet pop, and so cost-effective commodity bandwidth is available. You have all kinds of other reasons why you're an extremely attractive community, but there is likely to be a factor of the sort.
And then, last question, sorry. Sandy Organ, the comment by the councilman who said--
Utah?
I think it was Sandy Organ.
Oh, really?
Wasn't it?
Yeah, there was a councilman who--
Wish we would have done this 10 years ago.
I wish we had done it 10 years--
I guess my question is, I mean, there, I just was looking here at how comparable there, I mean, their median household income is $10,000 more. They're growing at a substantially higher rate than we are. And they just started down this road. Are there other communities that have kind of started down that road from a, other than Sandy Organ, from that kind of, that kind of way that we could look at and find how successful they've been?
If I may just ask for a clarification, when you say "that kind of way," are you pointing to a particular strategy? Because then I can look for the analogs for that strategy.
Sure, it was--
Like, is it the one that Sandy has used? Because they're really quite singular.
Right, the FTP, the public-private partnership. I guess what I'm saying is the ordinance, development ordinance, as Scott gasps, you know, requiring conduit to be placed in new developments. Are there other people in the country doing that?
Yes, there are. And I think this is probably a strategy or a technique that's going to grow really dramatically with time. We're going to see more of it. The place it originated is in Loma Linda, California. But Loma Linda was, I think, different to what we're looking at here and some of the other communities that are looking at the strategy because they were planning a municipal fiber-to-the-home build. So there was an immediate payoff for their developers. It wasn't hard to convince the developers that putting the modest investment into making that building fiber-ready was going to have a payoff because there would be a fiber connection in relatively short order. Sandy had something of that kind of situation, although I should mention that I have -- it has-- has emerged in the past 10 days that Sandy's public-private partnership has fallen through because of their, their partner had a problem getting financing. So I will update that, I will update you when I know what has happened. But that was a particularly interesting situation because in that case, it was private financing for the infrastructure and the city actually operating the network, which is kind of flips on its head, the more common model, which is the city owning the infrastructure and then private sector service provision. But in Sandy, I think what they found is they've been a municipal ISP wireless for a very long time. It's a fast-growing area, independent of broadband, just very fast-growing. And there was no broadband option until the city stepped in, none whatsoever. The city stepped in and started offering wireless services. Now there are other competitors in that market, but the city is saying, we need to get to fiber to the home. They found a partner who was going to finance the fiber itself, who's a UK company that I gather has not made it in the United States. And now they will be looking for another partner.
I'd love some more information on that kind of scenario. I'm fascinated by the fact that it's out of date a month, you know, a month later.
When we talk about public-private partnerships around fiber to the home, we are in the Wild West. This is very, very new. As recently as five years ago, I would have said around things like Sandy is doing and a number of other communities in, in North Carolina, for example, there are six communities that have put out an RFP for a private sector fiber to the home provider and received eight bids. We don't know how good those bids were, we don't know what's contained in them, but there seems to be new energy around this. But if you had asked me five years ago, I would have said, based on my experience until then, that any private provider who wanted to offer fiber to the home in a community, in my experience, had required the city either to finance it 100% or guarantee the provider's investment. Now that's 100% municipal risk without municipal control and without municipal decision-making with a private sector entity that can come and go at will and has no risk and so can get up and leave. That I think is a cautionary model and there was a reason why there were a lot of negotiations and a lot of attempts to get to some kind of public-private partnership, but nothing really emerged in that time period. In the past five years, we've seen a really, what seems to be something of a shift in terms of the Google model of partnering with cities, which is pretty significant. There's still some city risk and Kansas City put a lot on the table and Google can walk away if it wants to, but Google's a big company and it'd be pretty embarrassing if it walked away. So I think they're relatively safe. But we are, we're starting to see other kinds of situations like the one in Sandy where we're seeing new public-private partnerships. And there are few companies that seem to be entering the space with some financing. There's a company that says it has a few hundred million dollars and is building parts of Chicago and parts of Seattle in partnership with the cities where they are not requiring the city to guarantee 100% of their investment. And that's the shift that I've seen. I'd not seen that before, not until the last few years. But it's early days and three years from now, we may be saying, oh, well, that was a bust. Or we may be saying, wow, this is amazing. We've seen a whole new market develop. I certainly hope for the latter, but I'm cautious enough in advising public sector entities that I would say, we can't count on it. We, we really can't. It is untested, it's relatively new.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a lot of broad, or a lot of fiber optic in the, in the ground right now. And if we throw another 320,000, 650,000, build out the backbone, overall, what kind of shape are we in compared to a community this size? Are we in really good shape or are we just average?
You would, you would be in a really good position in terms of having the infrastructure to meet your own needs internally for communication services, without question. I mean, there are many hundreds of communities that have done this, which is why I said it's a tested model and we have a lot of data, but it's not a universal model. You would, you would have a control over pricing and an ability to really scale and be innovative internally when it comes to IT and communication services that is, if not singular, relatively uncommon. There are a few other communities in Kansas, by the way, that are doing this. Some of the suburbs of Kansas City seem to be building some of their own fiber as well, but it's not a dominant model. So, yeah, it's a differentiator. And then certainly making it available to the private sector.
Okay, so, so we build this out, from your comments tonight, it seems like we will attract some competition to the, to this area to want to work with us in terms of, it could be our local entities, it could be other people. Am I reading that right? Once we have the facility in place, it'll generate some activity?
I believe so. And, and I, you know, I say that with caution because there are no guarantees. I think there are ways that you can get harder data on that, although it's hard to sign contracts that guarantee anything in advance. But there are companies like the Kansas Fiber Network, which is a nonprofit that is owned by all the rural telcos or most of the rural telcos in the state, who told me they have some fiber coming in here and they'd be interested in expanding and potentially serving schools and so on. There are companies like Level 3 who serve bigger customers and are particularly interested in customers who have multiple facilities around the country. So they would want to create enterprise networks that connect, you know, data center X or healthcare provider Y to its counterparts in other parts of the country. And being able to reach them or get pretty close to them here in Lawrence would make a difference. Those are both companies that are willing to use municipal fiber. I know CenturyLink wants to come into this market more aggressively as well. I don't know that they would be willing to do so. They certainly didn't indicate that to me when I interviewed them. And generally, AT&amp;T and the cable companies declined to do so.
Okay, I guess I've got one more question and I'll yield. I'm fascinated by the comment you made about I-70 being the major trunk line of the world in terms of backbone internet, internet superhighway. And it seems like we are in an extraordinary, a good place then because we have a butt that corridor, of course. And how much or how difficult is it to build the facility you were talking about to get those, those other fiber optic lines into a facility in Lawrence to then have a marketplace kind of situation?
I have to apologize to you that I can't answer that with any specificity. I could get back to you on it.
Okay, I'd be interested in that because it seems like that's even one more advantage that we would have just because of the proximity we, with regards to that superhighway.
And I should, I should also mention that your internal staff, particularly in the IT department, has actually done quite a bit of thinking around that strategy and they may have numbers they can share with you. But I know that they've done a number of things in terms of planning and gaming and thinking about what it, what it would entail, what the benefits would be and what the costs would be and how to do it most efficiently at, you know, when the opportunities are right. When you're building, you build it then, much, much cheaper than going back and retrofitting after the fact and so on. And I know that's part of the strategic planning they've done.
Any other questions for Joe?
So you said it's an economic, an educational and a healthcare enabler. How are we doing?
You are doing pretty much the same as the majority of the populated parts of the United States. Far better than the rural parts of the country. And there is a small debate even now ranging in, raging in Washington. It was a big debate until a few years ago, but there's a small debate about how are we as a nation doing? By most accounts, we as a nation are not doing very well. We've fallen well behind our competitor nations in, in Asia and some in Europe. There's, there are lobbyists who say we're doing just fine. What are you worried about? Just leave it to the private sector. So that, that's not consolation, I know, because this is actually something that concerns me enormously, is that we're not seeing more investment in the United States and more vibrant competition and new infrastructure. Blair Levin, who was the architect of the national broadband plan and a pretty important Washington-based policymaker around communications, he was chief of staff of the FCC during part of the Clinton administration and is now at the Aspen Institute. And he, he is constantly pointing out that for the first time in anybody's memory, we don't have significant infrastructure upgrade plans for wireline infrastructure by any of our incumbent providers. That is the case here, but it's the case in most of the United States. So that, if that helps at all, you're not all that far behind much of the country, but we as a nation have a significant issue. And part of the reason why this debate is not raging at the same level it was a few years ago is because frankly, credit to Google, they sort of put the issue on the table in a new way. They made fiber exciting and sexy in ways it had never been in policy circles, I should say. And they, they sort of put an end to the conversation of, is a few hundred kilobits enough? Can we call that broadband? Even a few megabits, can we call that broadband? We're now talking about what comes next and how do we get there? So relative to the Google communities and a few others, you're challenged here. Relative to most of the country, you're okay. Where we are as a nation relative to where we should be leading the world, that's the sort of dominant problem, I would say.
Thanks.
Let's say that we wave the magic wand and found some money and wanted to get started on, on building out this loop, this backbone. How long would you estimate it would take before you'd get, I know it depends on how long it takes us to build out the backbone, but in terms of activity taking place to where we get to a dominant piece of our broadband being fiber, is that, can it happen in a year or does it take two years or three years? Or are there too many factors that you can't categorize?
So I think you could build, you could close these rings and build your internal infrastructure in a year, assuming a relatively speedy procurement process, which is one of the, the factors that's a challenge in many communities. Getting to what's shown in this graphic, you know, to, let's say the red, the orange and the, the green stages, we don't know. That's where we have relatively limited data. So getting to the point that the majority of your infrastructure is fiber, there's a chance that it could never happen. There's a chance it could take many years to get there. It really depends on how the industry expands and where we see investment. It depends on the market emerging for gigabit services. If what comes out of Kansas City and Austin and the other Google communities is that consumers start using services that require massive bandwidth and they're clamoring for those services, then it's very possible that our phone and cable companies will say, oh, we got to build those networks because consumers want those services. Right now, they, they believe consumers don't want those services and the services haven't emerged yet. So there are so many speculative elements to all of this that it's very hard for me to say you've got guaranteed anything. I feel quite strongly that that is the direction we're headed in. There will be applications that emerge that we can't even contemplate right now and that we will want. And at some point, there will be expansion by our companies. And Comcast, we know that the big cable companies already have internal engineering plans for getting to fiber to the home. As a business matter, they may not choose to do that for 20 years. We don't know. But we know that they plan it internally in case they need to. So we don't, we don't know what's happening. I wish I could give you something more definitive.
No, that's all right. Good conversation. It, well, you know, the overview I take from this is that probably this is going to happen someday for many of the cities that have any kind of population at all. And the longer the wait, the further you get behind your, your competition. And if you want to be one of the trendsetters, you get started with it as early as you can. Because as you've said or pointed out, that this is the, the communication link of the future. It's not what if something else happens? It's, fiber optics is what the future is. So it seems like it's, it's there and it's going to keep happening so to try and take advantage of what we have and move forward with it.
And you've made a very good start, I should say.
Any other questions?
Well, just to comment on this, along with what Commissioner Shum just brought up, if we're, if we're looking at our goals again and we look at upgrading our internal operation by using fiber, I still think that the thing that happens is, do we, do we design this in such a way as, you know, the, the future use by the public, you know, after we've made all the upgrades that we need to, to our internal operation? But, you know, how do we, how do we, do, do we keep it in-house or do we, do we make a decision sometime in the future as we allow companies to come on board? I, I mean, I guess I don't understand how you go from taking care of the internal operation to go to the public side. How do you make those decisions somewhere along the line?
My recommendation would be that even if you only invest incrementally, even if, you know, this 300 to 600 approximately happens over many years and you bring that cost down by just doing it when you happen to have roads open and so on, rather than moving toward it immediately. Even if you take that approach, anytime you do it, put in enough extra fiber for the private sector. So you're doing both from the very beginning. So you're designing it to be as flexible and as scalable as possible. If you are putting in 288 fibers and you're using some small fraction of that, because fiber goes a really long way. You've got a whole lot of capacity out there that you can lease and you can be creating opportunity for those private sector providers. In terms of your internal operations and whether that's publicly provided or private, if you own your own fiber and you choose not to operate your own internal network using your internal IT staff, that can be contracted out to a private sector provider. That's a relatively easy thing to do. Those costs though can be constrained. It's buying services over somebody else's network that are the hard costs to contain. That's why having your own fiber is a big deal, whether you light it and operate yourself or you contract out operations to an IT company. Does that answer that question?
I think so, yeah.
Thanks, Mike. It was a very good report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. It was really a pleasure to work on. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so as far as action goes, they've been provided some direction on how we can maybe fill that gap on Sixth Street. I think that would help with some redundancy and also some connectivity up and down one of the busiest streets. I'm surprised we haven't thought about this for our ITC too, as far as if that might help us.
At the, at the ITC facility?
Well, no, I'm sorry, not ITC. The traffic flow, what's that called?
Oh, the ITS.
Yeah, ITS, that's close. The ITS, you know, we have a gap from Iowa to Waukesha. You'd think that would be an important link as well from a justification standpoint. I don't know, but for some reason, I thought that we had some empty conduit there, but there's nothing. Because I did, I looked on the map and it didn't show up.
I might ask him if Jim can help answer that.
Commissioners, there is, the city doesn't have any conduit between Sixth and Waukesha and Sixth and Iowa. That is a goal of ours. I hope to be able to partner with hopefully KU and the school district and maybe even the hospital to fill in that area and share the cost was my hope.
So there's no empty conduit owned by anybody on Sixth Street?
The only empty conduit that exists there is from Sixth and Waukesha to Sixth and Monterey Way. We have conduit on both the north and south side. It's been buried a while. I'm not for sure of the condition of it. We would have to check, but we could get down as far as Monterey Way possibly with the existing conduit.
Okay, so that's where it's at. Okay, it's on the other side of the road. So I guess. So I guess one of the suggestions from this, I think Bob is pointing it out, if we're going to have, take any action, the first thing we should probably do is consider filling out the ring so there's some redundancy and then also some, what's that? Yeah, yeah, I just, but from an action standpoint tonight, I don't think we have to do anything, but I want to make sure we talk about if that's something that we want to move forward with in the future.
Here's my question. So, and I'm thinking maybe a little bigger picture and maybe how to involve our other public partners in our community. I'm wondering if it wouldn't, if it would not behoove us to, if I-70 is the backbone and we now have this beautiful trafficway that's going to come around our community that we're anticipating a lot of potential development. We're anticipating on 15th Street being developed out to that trafficway, which leads straight down to KU and, and really, really parallel from KU to farmland. Do we need to think bigger picture about this more so than just a ring around the city for the potential development that could happen later? That would be, that would be what I would offer.
Okay, so not just the basic, but also additional opportunities. 15th Street.
I mean, before it's being built, I mean, because one of the things that I appreciated that you said, you saying was, it's going to be a lot more expensive for us to go back and redo it than for us to do it the first time. So, and are we redoing 15th Street between Iowa and, or Bob Daley's Parkway? That's, that's coming, right? So I, you know, just a thought.
We do, as we do these road construction projects, we do look at the conduit possibilities. As Joanne indicated, we don't have a codified policy, which is probably something we could do, but we do look at that for different projects. Just so you know, I mean, one of the things that we're looking at is the partnership opportunities to complete that ring. And one of the things I hope to have in my budget recommendation is to take a look at that. I've got some recommendations in realigning some of our dead issues over the, over the next few years. It's got a lot, there's a number of different moving parts there, but we do recognize this, this gap is something that we need to do for city facilities and then also to establish us as a, as a better marketer of our conduit and fiber for third-party users, for private users as well.
Okay, is there any public comment on this?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Chris Sider, Wicked Broadband. And I just, I'm grateful to be in a room full of people who have actually read this report. It was a wonderful report and I was trying to share it with people and nobody else said it enjoyed it. I just wanted to say that Wicked Broadband has a proposal on the table that will take care of this green portion on Joanne's PowerPoint here, and it will address a lot of those issues. We'd also like to ask that the city retain necessary expertise to evaluate our proposal and see if we can come up with a concrete recommendation within a 90-day window. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Jeff Perry. I'm the Deputy Technology Officer for the University of Kansas, excuse me. First, I wanted to thank you guys for asking us to participate in some of this. We had wonderful experience working with Diane, working with Jim, working with many people in the city. It was really a pleasure to work with them. They were great people and it was nice also to have the opportunity that this presented to bring together the anchor tenants, the libraries, Haskell University, a lot of the private corporations. People's phones kind of all over Lawrence started ringing. People started talking about how much they paid for broadband. When they found out what I pay for broadband versus what they pay for broadband, a lot of them were shocked that we pay pennies on the dollar of what most businesses in Lawrence pay. Part of that is our economy of scale, but one of the things that we want to continue to stress to the city, and I think we're showing that by the relationship and the partnership that we're adhering into, is we want to make sure that any dollars that we spend in this community, any technology that we buy, which is very, very expansive, benefits the community as much as we can. We've had many providers come to us over the years and say CenturyLink, SherWest, Sprint, AT&amp;T, Level 3, anybody who sells anything comes to us and says, you guys have spent a lot of money and you're a major R1 research university. What do we do to get, to be a partner with you? Our answer is increasingly, build a pop in Lawrence because there isn't one. I can have them bring a circuit to me, but it's not going to benefit anybody else in Lawrence. The economics of bringing it to me are really the same of bringing it to Lawrence. It doesn't really cost any more money to build, for me to build a pop as it is for me to build a pop or you to build a pop that everyone can share and use. We believe that that makes the most sense in our outreach of scholarship to the community. It makes the most sense for businesses to be able to collaborate and it's something I think we're really looking forward to doing with the city. We're very excited to finish or well begin the Verizon conduit. And again, with the campus doing master planning right now, I know you guys have been involved in that to a large degree. There's certainly every odds that we will continue to move west down 15th Street. It's projects like that that we would love to talk to the city about. So I thank you guys for your time and I do ask if you have any questions about where KU is going on this, please feel free to reach out to us.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor Dever and Commissioners. Thanks for taking a second to hear my comments. I'm Court Buffington. I'm the President and CEO of Canren, the Kansas Research and Education Network. We're a high-tech company that's been in Lawrence. We're celebrating our 21st year in business this week. And we're in this industry specifically focused on the research and education field. You probably never even heard anything about us until a few months ago when we responded to the city's RFP for Internet service. But I'm not just here for Canren. I've been with the company for 14 years and 10 of those have been in Lawrence. 10 years ago, I made the choice to move to Lawrence and I'm raising a family here now. Our organization is a nationally recognized leader in network technology, right? Right in your backyard, you know, we're focused on RNE, but we've done some really, really neat things over the years. These guys are our biggest partners, KU. I wanted to point out that not only is the city going to be receiving services from Canren, but you're now also part of our consortium. We're not a commercial provider out here. We're a consortium owned and governed by our members and the city of Lawrence is now a part of that. So you're now a part of our family as well as us, us part of yours. In fact, before we even submitted the RFP response to the city, our membership committee looked long and hard. We have no municipalities as members, primarily staying in research and education and other community anchor organizations. A municipality was a first, but given the collaboration between the city, the university, the school district on these projects, we felt like that the city of Lawrence was the best bet in the entire state for our first partnership with the city as well. This is a huge topic. I think you're just scratching the surface of the iceberg. A lot of these questions are things that we in the RNE community dealt with 10 to 12 years ago on, do you purchase fiber? Do you buy services? How do you make this work? And I tell you, we, I still don't think we know some of the answers we thought we'd know by now. I did want to say that I have, and my organization has complete support for Joanne and her team. In the years I've done this, I've heard a lot of consultants talk about long-range technology planning. Usually they want to sell, usually they recommend buying a bunch of equipment that they happen to be selling. I have never, ever run into a consulting organization with as much integrity as CTC before. A lot of the things she, Joanne answered by saying, I don't have an answer, I'd have to get that for you. It, it makes me smile when I hear someone say that because I always question someone who has an answer for everything. Thank you for listening to my comments tonight and you're now a part of our family also. So feel to, feel free to reach out to us whenever you like.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to have my comments. My name is Mike Bosch. I'm the President and CEO of Reflective Group. I just wanted to make the Commissioners aware that there are other private entities who have spent significant amount of time, energy and resources exploring this community and the fact that they are underserved by current ISP providers. There are other private providers who are at the table and are investigating solutions and will have proposals to the Commission soon. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question? Ask a question, please? Are you, are you currently operating in Lawrence or just looking at it?
We are operating a software development in the cloud technology space out of Baldwin City. And we are looking at, we've already formed a separate company looking at the ISP in this regional market.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Katie Walsh. A couple of months ago, I spoke to you after I went to the school board meeting when they talked about technology. And there's some 40-plus percent of children in our schools in Lawrence who do not have access to a computer when they go home at night and have to wait in line at the library or go to a neighbor's. There is a technological divide in Lawrence and I'm sure you're aware of it, Commissioner Farmer. So God love Google, but Google didn't hook up every home in Kansas City. If you look at the breakdown, there's a lot of low-income people who missed out. So I'm just hoping that as we talk about increasing access, we're increasing it for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Any other public comment? Yes, Jim?
Just wanted to clarify one thing. I said Sixth and Monterey Way, but it's actually Sixth and Folks Road. That's how far the empty condo goes.
To Sixth and Folks?
From Sixth to Waukerusa to Sixth and Folks Road.
Okay. Okay, so besides what we talked about previously, I just want to make sure that we kind of have a short-term action plan because we spent some good money with CTC and I'd like to maybe revisit this if you have any other thoughts or comments. I, I like the idea of a policy. You know, we just, we just added a complete streets policy after years of consternation, I guess would be the word. And I think there's, you know, reason to believe that, you know, a policy of some sort would be good. But I think we need to start acting on our, you know, at our own level as far as filling out our, the conduit we have and then trying to figure out how expensive it would be to try to finish the ring and then even as Jeff pointed out, I think a P O, a point of presence here in Lawrence would be fantastic. And I think it's something that we could do and, you know, in cooperation with KU. So, yes.
Well, I think that we should ask staff to come back with some kind of schedule of how we can quickly complete the backbone, the 17 miles and try and establish some kind of timeline. And then we could, we'll have to balance that through our budgets to see how much money we can spend each year, as well as the policy of whenever you open up a street that puts some conduit in there, it makes sense. And maybe even so where it's not on the, on the backbone, but because I can start to see a lot of extra streets needing to be serviced in the, in the future. But anyway, I'd like to see some kind of timeline with some monetary numbers attached to it and then we need to work that through the budget. I, I made a statement before, I think Jeremy's on the same page, I think everybody is. If we stand still, we're going to, standing still is not standing still, it's falling behind. If we fall behind, it's going to take a long time to get caught up. We might lose a lot of economic development prospects as well as some of our established customers that are here, some of our established businesses that are here. So I think we just got to keep, we need to push forward fast.
Yeah, and we're going to have 400 acres of developable land and farmland and if we can work something out, they're only 20 miles from Google. Yes.
But along with that, why don't we look at the idea of putting together partnership with LMH and then the school district and anybody else that wants to be involved with this? Because it sounded like there was some planning that Jim mentioned that was already being done and maybe that that would have some economic, you know, changes and, you know, whatever budget, you know, consequences there would be. So why don't we go ahead and look at those partnerships and then KU and everybody else in, so that maybe we can go ahead and figure, you know, fill in these gaps and at least we have that ring in place before we set up the policy for the next steps.
Sounds good. Well, I, I just want to thank everybody. It's, I learned a lot through this endeavor. I sat with Bob when he read the report and I was reading it myself and I think, I think it was educational and informational and I think it shed some light on where we stand as a city and I think some economic opportunities that I think Jeremy was pointing out. I think we're, we're going to have to see how it relates to trying to go to that last, the last mile, but we just need to worry about the middle mile right now. I think for us as a community, that's, that's our job is to, you know, provide that infrastructure. And I want to thank Jeff at KU and the Jims and Ed and other people who sat in on this, on the selection of the consultant and of course, the formulation of some of these partnerships has been great. And I know that Jeff Federer and Jeff, I think, have some vision for a expanded, or an expansion into the Lawrence community of KU's resources. And I think this is the time we need to utilize the assets we all have and start using the power that we have as a community and our new Canren relationship and our new, hopefully a better and enhanced relationship with KU to really do this cost-effectively. So I, I think everybody involved, yeah.
Just to piggyback on that, do we have a broadband, fiber, citywide, digital road master plan?
No.
That might be a good idea.
Not that I'm aware of. Jim, do we?
I do.
Oh, you have one. Okay, so Jim has one in his head and we need to put that in paper right away.
Secondly, I just don't want us to forget the SLT, that's going to be huge. And then third, I mean, I, I would like to ask that we have staff or maybe a consultant, maybe even Joe to do it, to look at Wicked's plan to see, you know, because I think I understood you to say that the green is, is probably the most important, right?
It's the long-term goal.
It's all important.
Well, sure, right.
It's all important and the individual community determines which part is most significant in that community. But the green is the hardest part to do, is the most costly part to do. It's the part that's most unreachable in most places.
Okay, so who would you have review the wicked broadband proposal?
Well, and I think, and I don't know if, I don't know if CTC could do it or what, just, I don't know, I don't know the best way to do it, but.
Haven't you seen it? The most recent wicked broadband proposal to the city?
Yes.
Okay, she's, she's seen it.
Okay. I'd love to hear thoughts, Ed, you know?
We can pay her for those thoughts, I suppose.
Sure, sure.
I, I, it would be irresponsible for me to comment on it without really vetting it. I'm sorry.
Sure, but I mean, maybe that could be something that we could do.
Absolutely. I think that's, we, we need, we need to approach, we need to allow the city and somebody with a knowledge of what our future plans are for the ring to evaluate a private proposal like that against our plan, our planned infrastructure and see how it fits in because it could intersect perfectly for some of those businesses, some of those residences. I think it's a great idea.
I think we just need to get it on the table.
Yeah, yeah. So why don't you talk to CTC about that? I, yeah, that would, that would be great. All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is to receive staff memo regarding an alternate site for our temporary transit hub. Yes, you are.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is Bob Nigent, Administrator for Lawrence Transit. Couple of weeks ago, we, I was before you talking about the petition and about our temporary location for a transit hub at, in the 800 block of Vermont. At that time, I was directed by Commission to do a little bit further investigation and analysis on a location that was presented to us under the petition and that was the location at 10th and Kentucky, kind of that block. We had done some initial analysis and looked at that at least on one side of the street. That's what we kind of read into the petition. That's what we kind of read into the petition. So, we've gone back and actually looked at the other side of the street and how transit would work using both sides of that street. So, this thing still hasn't come up?
Did you break it?
I broke it.
All the smart people are out there. We probably, I don't know, Diane's pretty smart.
We need a sixteen-year-old down here to roll this.
Do I have to pay for it if I broke it?
No, no. We don't have that rule here. She broke it, you bought it.
Ouch! Let me just switch back here and see if this comes back. See if this comes back.
Yeah, where's our... It's right there. It's coming.
Hold on.
Voila. There it is. Diane's a technology person. Until smoke comes out. To orient you a little bit on this, this is actually, this is Tenth Street. That would be Tenth Street right there. This side, of course, is Vermont. It goes up and down this side, and this side is Kentucky. So, the area we initially looked at was this side of the street. We came back and looked at both sides of the street, including the other side over there. What we found in that, in our analysis, we actually took some buses out, looked at the sidewalks, and looked at, looked at the area on how we could operate over there. One of the first things that we noticed is there is a brick sidewalk just south of that parking lot where those cars are parked nose in there at the upper right kind of portion of your screen there. Those brick sidewalks, of course, have to go out because wheelchairs have a hard time maneuvering and operating on brick sidewalks. All the sidewalks would probably have to be removed because there's about a twelve-to-eighteen inch difference between where the sidewalk is and where the curb is. So, it would be very hard to pave or to do anything to have that uphill portion there for anybody in a wheelchair with a disability. We were saying that that would probably have to be dropped and a retaining wall put in up against the parking lot in order to get it to level ground. Approximately twelve feet of grass area, which is this area in here, clear up to this side and down the south side of it, too, that would all have to be paved one way or another in order to get people from the curb to the sidewalk. So, that, and we looked at that and did some pricing on that. The estimated cost of doing that would be about $180,000. And we're, we do have some federal requirements about total cost of changes, especially with local funds matching it, too. Transfers, if we were doing transfers between buses now, keep in mind that we would have to split our fleet and have half the buses sitting on one side of the street and have the bus sitting on the other. What this would end up forcing is a lot of people crossing in the middle of that street. It's a very narrow street. That's another thing we found out, it's very narrow. You get a lot of buses in there, and you have an eleven-foot wall basically on each side of the street. And then you have people, as you know, if you see people coming out between cars, that's dangerous enough. Imagine what that would be like if they came out from between buses. And they would be crossing mid-block most probably there, trying to get from one bus to another. And an example of that would be even where we're located now, where our, we have, half our buses split between kind of the south side of Ninth Street at New Hampshire and some on the north side up there. We have a lot of people crossing the road there, but at least we have an inner, a pedestrian crosswalk there, which this is gonna be kind of mid-block, which is usually pretty dangerous for people to navigate through. Parking, there's ten parking places that we'd have to remove to do that. Approximately fifty percent of those parking places that are available at this location, especially when we went out and did the ADA analysis and had the buses out there, about fifty percent of them, let's see, were in use. Basically, about fifty percent of them were in use, but most of those were pretty quick turnover. They were only there for maybe five minutes or so. They pull up and park, pull back away. We had a difficult time even getting our buses into the curb to do our analysis for that. So, even though it doesn't look like there's a lot of cars parked there, I think there's a lot of turnover and a lot of people coming in and out of there. Let's see. I'm gonna turn this over to Mike Sweeten, who's our general manager, general manager of MV, who runs our service, and he's gonna talk a little bit about kind of the safety and how our buses would operate in and out of this quarter, especially knowing that we have Tennessee and Kentucky, and they're kind of, right now, there's no stops, or there's no stoplights or anything there, so we'd be pulling buses out in a pretty high-speed corridor. So, I'll let him talk a little bit more about that. And let me get this, are you gonna need this, Mike?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, Bob. Bob asked, as he said, for us to take a look at operations and safety, and at the same time that we met, to look over the issues that he was discussing. We brought a couple of vehicles out, my operations manager and an operational supervisor. There's really three main areas that we looked at that present some significant difficulties. The first is access to the location for the vehicles coming into and departing. Whether you're turning off of Kentucky or onto Tennessee, both present with the parallel, directly parallel lanes of traffic. And parking on both sides of the street, significant, a significant number of vulnerable points that our bus operators would need to account for in trying to make a turn there. Tail swing is a big issue. When you turn a large bus, the back end swings out as you come around. That would move into the lane of travel that's next to you, where you've got traffic, say, on Kentucky and Tennessee, that's gonna be passing either on your right or your left while you're trying to negotiate a turn. At the same time that you're doing that and trying to account for that, there's no traffic control at the intersection to help you with it. As you start to move on to the Tenth Street, now you've got parking of whatever vehicles, whether there are our vehicles or any others that are on there, as well as traffic that is approaching or sitting at that intersection waiting to turn. So, you've got three points, at least three points, that you've gotta try and manage all at the same time. All of it's in motion, and all of it's in a very narrow corridor. Once you get onto Tenth Street, you're on a very narrow corridor with, as Bob said, buses parked on both sides of the street that are gonna effectively change Tenth Street from being a two-way street to a single lane with traffic still trying to go two directions. When you add into that buses that are either trying to move out or private traffic or commercial traffic in the area, we're gonna find ourselves where there's not room for people, there are people in opposite directions, and there's no way for them to get through. There's a significant concern about continuous side swipe issues with the buses parked there on the side or vehicles passing each other, or in situations where we might even find ourselves in trying to turn onto the street. To begin with, we encounter traffic coming from an opposite direction. Somebody's gotta back up. That's gonna be very, very difficult for us to do because we're not gonna be able to pass and clear the way. And that will be exacerbated whenever vehicles are departing that, arriving or departing that location. The third thing Bob touched on a bit is pedestrian traffic. While we were there, there's a significant amount of pedestrian traffic there throughout the period that we were there without there being any buses there. And they're not crossing at the intersections, they're crossing at the alley, they're crossing at the churches, they're crossing in the middle of the block. If you put buses in that situation, as Bob said, you've got eleven-foot walls with space, narrow spaces between that now not just the public traffic that we would generate, but the traffic that's already, pedestrian traffic that's already there in the neighborhood is gonna be moving out of the, behind, from the blind spot at the end or the rear of a bus into traffic that's in that street. And we won't be able to have any control over that. And that's probably the most significant and concerning area of us is for bus operators is bus and pedestrian conflict. So, from those three perspectives, I would definitely see some significant concerns.
The other thing that we did, we actually called and talked to the three clergy in that general area. If you go back to the initial overhead I showed and look at the lack of space there is actually between, between the curb where the buses are and their buildings. If there's gonna be a tight corridor on the street for cars to go through, there's definitely gonna be a tight corridor between that curb and those buildings. In talking to the clergy, you know, they were concerned that it was gonna be that close to their buildings. That's one of the things when we looked at the location in the eight-hundred block of Vermont, we were trying to stay away as much as we possibly could from buildings and from being involved in businesses and stuff. That's one of the reasons why we're, we proposed that location by a parking lot. This is a very busy location, is what they're telling us, not, maybe not so much at this time of year, but when preschool and stuff starts up again during the season, and that goes six to nine months out of the year, it gets even more busy in that general area. They did also remind me that churches, it's not just all about Sundays, it's about a number of things that they do every day of the week. They always have something going on. It may not be as heavy a volume as they have on Sundays, but they do have activities going on there a lot during the week. So, that's something you need to take into consideration. Our biggest concern, I guess my biggest concern, is knowing how much work that has to be done there, even just the construction work alone. And we know that we might have a very short timeframe in order to move from our current location once the building permit is pulled for the development where we're at. How much time are we gonna have to move? So, I mean, there are some time constraints. I will tell you that we are right now, we have delayed our, the printing of our guide to ride and our informational piece for our service. We've delayed that for a couple of weeks so we could at least bring this back in front of commission again to see if we could get some resolution and move forward with that. The problem with delaying that and the problem with not having an answer is we might have to put out a certain amount of information, print a certain short kind of piece with inadequate or incorrect information to the public. So, you know, we kind of went through this once before with the last move. We did it really fast, and we were kind of embarrassed, and a lot of our ridership really beat up on us because they didn't know where you were to catch the bus. So, anyway, this is what we found. What I think staff is looking at is, at this point, I still think the eight-hundred Vermont location is the best location we have, unless we have a lot more time in order to do the work at this location, so.
So, tell us about the Ninth Street, seven-hundred block of Ninth Street. I noticed that in your memo. Can you tell me what, where are we talking about?
Yeah, there was another proposal that came in. The seven-hundred block of Ninth Street is quite a distance. It's about five more minutes of running time to get to that location. A little bit of background on buses, they run by the minute. A few minutes in one direction means a lot to us because a few minutes one direction means a few minutes the other direction, that ends up being five minutes. Five minutes of running time to go to a location means five minutes to come back, so that's ten minutes. We have a thirty-minute or sixty-minute window that we're operating in. It gets very difficult. We do have several of our routes right now that run extremely tight, which means that they, by the time they get to the downtown, they can't even sit there for a couple of minutes, they just have to roll out and go back the other direction because of, one, because of peak traffic at certain times, we run into that, or because we're getting enough additional ridership that it's taking longer for us to board passengers on the route, which eats up a lot of running time. Each time you pull over, you're burning a few minutes to do that. So, just the running time alone would mean we would have to probably restructure a number of our routes, or either truncate them from where we're serving now on the distal ends, truncate them in order to operate to that location. So, really, we discounted that pretty fast because of how much work we'd have to do and how much change it would be in our route structure and our service, so.
Mayor, here's the dilemma. You know, I can't imagine, you know, us really wanting to spend the $180,000 to make the improvements on Tenth Street and to disrupt the churches and the activities that they have that go there every day. And it's everything from, you know, the schools that they operate to, you know, funeral services I know that they have. And I know that, you know, that's great activity. But still something, you know, that I have, one of the problems that I have is taking away the parking for employees and, you know, the long-term parking on the eight-hundred block of Vermont Street and the effects it'll have, you know, at least on the businesses on the west side. That's my problem. I think that, you know, the downtown businesses put up with a lot on parking and sometimes lack thereof, so I'm gonna have a hard time, you know, removing the parking even though it's on a temporary basis. Wish I had an answer where it could go.
What are you gonna do?
Well, I don't know, Bob. But we've done a lot with parking here lately.
Well, the only thing to keep in mind, and I know because I live, I operate out of the north end of town that's very, very short of parking, always has been, but it's even shorter now with the library, is that in August, we're gonna see some relief, so that's at least, you can see the finish line here.
Yeah.
Wonder if anyone wants to speak to this?
Yeah, probably. Any public comment? No? Okay. Guess not.
Well, I would say, I received, I think we all did, a couple of emails from participants who asked us to look at the ten-hundred block, and it seemed like they agreed with the staff's review of the premises and that they've more or less said this is where it ought to be so much in their memos. I don't know if you got those same memos?
I did.
And one of them suggested maybe turning the west side of Vermont into some long-term parking on a temporary basis so that there is some long-term employee parking. I don't have, that's fine with me to do that because, like I say, as soon as the parking garage is completed by the library, we're gonna see a surplus of parking finally for that end. And so, with those two comments, I feel like they've agreed that that's about the best you can do for the moment. The real solution is to finish the parking garage, find a permanent home for the transfer station, and then it's resolved. And so, in the meantime, wherever you put it, I made that comment the other day, wherever you put it, you're gonna please one group if you move it, but wherever you put it, the next, the next neighborhood's not gonna like it, so. Perfect. It's what made America famous.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
On the twenty-fifth of this month, we're going to have the Transit Center analysis will be coming before you. So, we are working on it. You will get to see at least where we're at at this point, and you'll be giving us some direction at that time. So, that'll be a couple of weeks away. So, you're gonna see me again, and you're gonna hear more about Transit Center and the hub at that time again.
And I think you can give a preview and indicate that it is not at this location.
Correct.
And, you know, on the Ninth, on the Ninth Street, I was just looking where that was. You know, they're getting ready to start a construction project right there. The vacant land, I know that the developer, the Lofts, is planning on building another building right there, and I don't know when he's gonna start, but it's gonna be quite a bit, kind of the same thing that's happened. The reason we're moving to begin with is supposed to be happening at the same spot in the near future, so. I don't know, how long, how long are we planning on keeping the hub there? This, wherever we move it, is it gonna be until we find the permanent location?
Right, until we can move our total operations, and then it depends on what we...
Assume we can't find the perfect spot, would we move it back to where it is now?
I don't know. That's something we hadn't anticipated. I mean, all along, I think we were looking at moving back to Ninth and Mass, and, you know, whether we would wanna move back to Ninth and New Hampshire or we'd move there during the construction, I don't know.
You were wanting to move back to Ninth and Mass?
Well, that was our initial plan.
Oh, really?
When we moved out there, our initial plan was to go back to Ninth and Mass, and that...
Oh, I didn't know that. Yes, sir.
My hope is that we will be at this temporary location no longer than one year. I don't know that Bob agrees with that, but that's my hope. So, that this time next year, when we're getting ready to start a guide to ride, we will be at...
we will be at the new location. It may not be finished at that point. We may not be in our construction, but we could be at a new location. I think we need to move with a little bit of dispatch on this.
My hope would be it's less than a year. But at least there's timeline out there.
Sir, do you have anything to add to this discussion?
You know, I think, I think we've asked downtown businesses for a lot. And it seems philosophically contradictory to me to say that downtown is the heart of the city, that we want to protect downtown, and then we, in a sense, don't do that when it comes to something like this, so. I got the memos today. It seems like, you know, they've acquiesced in a sense, but I also got a couple of other emails from folks that have businesses along the 800 block of Vermont that said, "Please don't take away our parking." And so I would feel better if, with all the downtowns given, if we could find another way. I mean, is this 700 East Ninth Street? It's Ninth and Pennsylvania, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that about right?
Ninth and Pennsylvania.
And that's not, any new developments are not planned to go there in the next year, is that correct?
No, that's what I was talking about. I was just looking at Google Earth that if it's a 700 block of Ninth Street, correct?
You're looking at Ninth and Pennsylvania. Right?
Yeah, between Delaware, yeah, it's Delaware. And I do know that there's discussions or the property's been purchased and they're supposed to start work on another development.
There's a plan, the same development group that did the Polar Building is also planning on doing something in that Ninth and Pennsylvania, Ninth and Delaware area, an additional multifamily.
In the next year?
This year.
That empty space.
Like when, during the next year?
I mean, they want to get their land approvals this year. I don't know that they'd start construction this year.
Yeah. So it could, you know, it could take a whole year. And, you know, then I guess we question how we're going to reschedule the buses. So there's the utility and the functionality of the bus that I agree with you, Jeremy. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to put any more burden on people who are trying to do business downtown, but I think having the hub downtown brings business to downtown. I mean, we're trying to encourage alternate forms of transportation through the bus. If there's a parking problem, maybe people will take the bus downtown. I mean, that's kind of the philosophy that I have. And if it's right downtown, people will be more likely to use it, especially transfers. And that's the only reason I would discourage move it any further. Five blocks isn't that far if you're able-bodied, but it's, you know, if you're trying to coordinate all these routes, it's going to take a pretty substantial effort to do so for just a year. But, you know, I'm willing to consider anything because I'm with you. I hate to, I hate to put any more people out of the parking spaces that we've already done. I mean, it's been messy already, I agree. It's been, although August is going to come around the corner, we're going to have, you know, 80 more parking spaces than we had before.
Bob, question please. If we approve the Vermont Street site, when would you move that location, to that location?
We were not intending on moving until the construction started. But if we're going to, if we know that we're going to move there, then we'll go on and put it in our guide to ride and probably start putting things in place.
Should we move before you absolutely have to?
Yeah, I think so.
And what's that, take about a 48-hour window to? Have you got everything programmed out?
Yeah, we'll probably have to do a little bit of work at the site in order to accommodate the buses and stuff there, even at that site. So it'll take a little bit longer than that. And the biggest problem is just getting the information out to the public because if not, you're going to have people standing at Ninth and New Hampshire waiting for a bus and it's going to be around the corner somewhere that they're not going to be able to see it. So that was the problem we really ran into the last time. It's it took almost two months for people to figure out where to catch the bus. They may not ride it every day and then they go to the wrong location and we were getting complaints all the time and they had no idea how to catch the bus, so. That's what we were trying to really keep from happening this time. That's why we came to you in November of last year.
Okay, so Mayor, if you could, let's go back to the 800 block of Vermont then as we look at this location. If we were to change the extended parking on the west side of the street to long-term parking, is that one of the items that we would look at?
Do you have complete control over, as you know, the parking standards? Do that?
Do whatever you want.
And how many parking places again are we giving up, total?
16.
How many parking spaces are we taking out of Vermont?
13.
Mayor, I might suggest that we do this. I'd like to see us draw this out. Look at what we would change the long-term parking to.
On Vermont?
On Vermont. Give us a week and let me look at this, okay?
Okay.
Continue with the discussion next week.
Continue the discussion until next week.
But let's show, you know, the parking that we're going to remove, the long-term parking that we're going to put on the west side for employee or, you know, whatever it may be, customer parking, you know, might, you know, ease me a little bit in looking at this.
Can I ask a question to your staff, whoever knows the answer to this? Is the parking on the east side of Vermont now long-term? Is it a two-hour parking?
I think it's all five-hour.
It's long-term.
On that side, yeah.
But on the, it doesn't seem right if it's on...
On the east side of Vermont, I think it's five-hour parking.
But on the west side, it's just two-hour parking?
I think so, to accommodate those businesses.
Yeah, to accommodate Vermont Street Station.
The businesses that are there. At least I get a ticket there quickly.
That and agricultural interests.
That's right, on the farm.
That's right, there's a...
Don't block the tractor.
Some urban farming going on there, so.
So you want additional information on that and then we'll just put this back on your regular agenda first item next week?
You want a motion to defer, Mayor?
I would like a motion to defer decision on this matter until next week.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to defer the item for one week to give staff the opportunity to show us where long-term parking would change on the west side of Vermont Street and to show again the proposed loss of parking spaces on the east side of Vermont, the 800 block.
Sir, second?
Sir.
Motion to defer a week by Vice Mayor Yimick, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
The only thing I would hope, though, that we've heard there is some, there is a time that we try to get the customers the bus. We have to decide next week because...
No, we won't.
Otherwise, we're just creating more of a mess for other people, other parties, so.
Yeah. We still don't know when they're going to break ground over there anyway, so. Might be another three or four weeks.
I asked when that was going to happen and the answer I got was the last week of June.
And we also have the deadline of wanting to solidify our guide to ride. Get all of that out.
I understand that.
Some competing interests to try and get all this done.
The answer I got back from when the hotel was going to start construction was the last week of June.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Came from one of the developers.
And I'll also get clarification on when that work might start on Ninth Street, Jeremy? East Ninth Street?
Right, I mean, that, for me, I mean, if we can do something to mitigate the impact on downtown businesses, again, if this was the first time, sure. Second time, okay. I mean, how many times have we done this and told downtown businesses, "Well, just deal with it"? And in all fairness, in the arena of compromise, how much can you ask somebody to give before you say, "All right, now we're going to, now we're going to do something for you"?
Okay. Is there any public comment of a general nature? No? Okay. Get your agenda items.
Commissioners just added that one item and we've got the Menards zoning items. We've also got staff's recommendation on consulting engineering team for the Walker Russo wastewater treatment plant and the San Tris sewer conveyance system to that plant. That recommendation will be on as well, so it'll be a healthy meeting next week. And also, I'm going to give you, I want to give you a brief budget update following through on some of the questions that you had at the study session and any more information that I have in regards to revenues and expenditures and all those fun things.
Are we going to have a study session on the retail market study at some point in the future?
I think we can do that at an appropriate time.
I think, Bob, you were the one that suggested that we do that and I think it's a good idea.
I have, when we get the calendar, I have a request for a study session on Tuesday, July the 9th, on the budget. Just to alter the budget calendar just a little bit. I don't want to hop to that just too quick.
Anything going on with 1106 Rhode Island, anything recently, or is it still?
I know that we have given the potential purchaser, developers, some information in regards to that. I think we talked a little bit about what public incentives that were available. We gave that information to Mr. Herneley. Haven't seen anything, probably inappropriate to check in. I know that there've been, I think there were some travel plans maybe from him as well. I don't know exactly what else was going on.
He has been gone for the last two-plus weeks and before that he had something else going on. He has returned. Asked him that very question. He said, "I'm getting back into it just right now. I've been gone for a couple of weeks," so. He's, he's doing.
Okay. Pretty good. Is there any commission items? Okay. Rousing happy birthday?
Thanks.
Want to sing to you?
No.
Okay, good.
You'll be fine, thanks.
Only if it's a solo. Okay, anything on the calendar we need to discuss?
Would like for you to look and I'll talk to Terry about, start to have a study session there on Tuesday, the 9th, at 4 o'clock. That night is, according to our budget calendar tonight, you're going to set the maximum expenditure and maximum bill levy so that we'll know what budget to publish for your hearing. And I think it may be good to have a study session on that. On that date, you'll be getting the budget here at the end of this month, my recommended budget. So that's at least my suggestion for a time.
Okay.
Is that working for everybody?
Yeah.
I think so.
July 9th. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Motion to adjourn the meeting by Commissioner Shum. Second by Commissioner Farmarall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Good night.